Community plan is for Hampton to be a unique regional retail and entertainment destination. In order to promote that vision, the public policy that supports this is to support cities' economic development, expand entertainment opportunities throughout Hampton, and nurture small and startup businesses. If this application is approved, staff do recommend attaching 12 conditions, including the location, which will be our next slide, the hours of operation, sound, and revocation, among others. The proposed hours of operation being presented by staff is for the indoor live entertainment to be limited till 10:00 PM Sunday through Thursday and 2:00 AM on Friday and Saturdays, and outdoors for the live entertainment to be limited to 9:00 PM Sunday through Thursday and 10:00 PM Friday and Saturday. And these hours are consistent with applications that have been approved for indoor and outdoor live entertainment in this area. You can see on the floor plan, there are two areas that are designated for bands. One is indoor and one is outdoor. Both of these are limited to six by 12 areas, and they are just areas that will be cleared for live entertainment. There's not going to be a specific built area for the live entertainment. A community meeting was held on Tuesday, June 2nd. There were no members of the public in attendance. And so with that, staff recommend approval of use permit application 15-8 with 12 conditions. I'm, I can take any questions, and our representative of our applicant is also here to answer any questions you might have.
Madam Chair, just one question. Lucy, where was the community meeting held at the, at the?
It was at the restaurant.
At the restaurant?
Mm-hmm.
And you said that there's no current outside seating area for, is not going to be a formal seating area? Is that what?
There is, they actually do operate outdoor dining right now. And there is, they have, they have areas where, where the live entertainment will be, but they also have areas that are designated seating all the time.
Thank you.
I believe we do have a representative of the applicant who's here.
Smithfield, Virginia, and I'm here on behalf of the applicant to answer any questions. Crystal Stomp. Okay. Thank you.
There's no other speakers who've signed up for this item.
Just one question. You said that the meeting was held and no one attended? Is that what I heard you say?
Correct.
Okay, so there's no opposition anywhere that's been presented or concerned?
Not that I'm aware of. Nobody has contacted the city about it.
Okay, thank you. And Madam Chair, just while you're still there, Ms. Stomp, what type of entertainment?
It, the licensee would like to provide acoustic music as well as possible karaoke. Those are the two ideas.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry about that. I turned it off when I coughed and forgot to turn it back on. Okay, so no other questions, no other speakers. We're ready for motion.
Madam Chair.
Mr. McLeod.
I move that we approve a use permit application number 15-00008 with the 12 conditions.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Southall?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. McLeod?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Ms. LaRue?
Aye.
The chair will now entertain a motion to convene a closed meeting pursuant to the exemption from open meetings allowed by Section 2.2-3711 (A), (7) of the Code of Virginia to consult with legal counsel regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel. We need a motion, and I'm told so moved will suffice.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right, call the roll, please.
Mr. Southall?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. McLeod?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Ms. LaRue?
Aye.
We will convene in the closed meeting, convene the closed meeting in the Lawson Conference Room, and will reconvene the open meeting and certify the closed meeting in council chambers.
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Campbell?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Ms. Schmidt has had to leave the meeting. She had another place to, to be.
Ms. LaRue?
Aye.
All right.
Wait, I missed Mr. McLeod again.
I'm sorry.
Mr. McLeod?
Hi.
Okay. All hair accounted for, except she had to leave. All right. Now we have some zoning ordinance amendments.
Yes, we do. The next public hearing item is zoning ordinance amendment number 162-2015. This is an ordinance to amend and reenact Chapter 2 of the Zoning Ordinance of the City of Hampton, Virginia, entitled Definitions by amending Section 2-2 pertaining to definitions. Approval of this amendment would create new definitions for the uses hospital, medical office, and mental health slash substance abuse treatment facility. This application is also being concurrently advertised for the June 10th, 2015 city council meeting. Copies of documents or information concerning this proposal may be obtained from the Community Development Department located in Hampton City Hall at 22 Lincoln Street. And Jeff Conkel is here to present this item to the commission. Do you want to do all three? All right, we're going to do all three, so you can discuss them all.
Present all three, and then we vote on each one? Okay.
Next item, or the company item, is zoning ordinance amendment number 163-2015. This is an ordinance to amend and reenact Chapter 3 of the Zoning Ordinance of the City of Hampton, Virginia by amending Sections 3-2 entitled Table of Uses permitted pertaining to medical slash dental clinics and sanitariums. Approval of the amendment would rename the use of medical slash dental clinic to medical office. This amendment would also rename the use of sanitarium to mental health slash substance abuse treatment facility and remove the use from the RR, RM, C1, C2, RT1, HRC1, DT1, and DT2 districts, but permit the use by right in the C3 district. This application is also being concurrently advertised for the June 10th, 2015 city council meeting. Zoning ordinance amendment number 164-2015 is an ordinance to amend and reenact Article 3 of Chapter 9 of the Zoning Ordinance of the City of Hampton, Virginia, entitled O-CC District, Coliseum Central Overlay by amending Section 9-23 pertaining to modifications to permitted uses. Approval of this amendment would remove the use of mental health slash substance abuse treatment facility from the OCC district. The application is also being concurrently advertised for the June 10th, 2015 city council meeting. Copies of documents or information concerning the proposal may be obtained from the Community Development Department located at Hampton City Hall at 22 Lincoln Street. And with all of that, Jeff is here to present all those. We can hold one public hearing, and then you would take a vote on each item individually.
That sounds fine.
Thank you, Terry. Good afternoon, Chairwoman LaRue and members of the commission. So I'm presenting all three of these amendments together in one presentation. They're all sort of interrelated healthcare uses in our zoning ordinance. Our existing zoning ordinance contains several types of these medical-related uses, and we're addressing three of them today: hospitals, sanitarium, and medical dental clinic. None of those uses are defined, so we need to create definitions for them. And some of those uses are permitted in districts which don't really go along with the vision in our, in our community plan or in the master plan. For example, Coliseum Central is being updated, and there's a focus on that district being a key economic driver in the city through things like retail and entertainment uses. We're also changing, or sort of altering, the names of the uses to modernize the language. We'll be changing a medical dental clinic to simply a medical office, and we're also changing the sanitarium name to the mental health slash substance abuse treatment facility. So it's a brief presentation, but if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. We are recommending approval of all three amendments. And I will pass out one letter we received from the public. A property owner in the Coliseum Central District submitted an email in opposition to the changes because of the potential impact on his property.
Would you like us to go ahead and act on each of these as you present them? Okay, okay.
I will share with you that there are no speakers who have signed up on any of these three items.
Thank you.
So just to reiterate, once you get through with whatever discussion you want to have, we would ask that you act on each one with a motion, each of these three items.
But we're going to let Jeff finish the full presentation first.
That was the full presentation, so.
Oh, we finished?
Yes, it was brief.
Okay. Sorry, getting late. Want to take a minute and look this letter, look over this letter?
Madam Chair, just one question for, for Jeff. Jeff, so this letter's in opposition really of 162-2015, which, and the other two are, is domino effect of what we do with 162.
That's right. They're all sort of interrelated. We're defining the terms in zoning ordinance amendment 162, but then we're also changing where those uses are permitted through zoning ordinance amendments 163 and 4.
Got it, thank you.
Are there any other questions? Is there anybody from the floor who would like to speak to this? And I think we're ready for a motion on the first, number 162-2015.
Madam Chair, I recommend approval of zoning ordinance 162-2015.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Southall?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. McLeod?
Aye.
Ms. Bunting? Ms. LaRue?
Aye.
163-2015?
Madam Chair, I move that we recommend approval of zoning ordinance amendment 163-2015.
Second.
Call the roll.
Mr. Southall?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. McLeod?
Aye.
Ms. LaRue?
Aye.
164-2015?
Madam Chair, I recommend approval of zoning ordinance amendment 164-2015.
Second.
Call the roll.
Mr. Southall?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. McLeod?
Aye.
Ms. LaRue?
Aye.
The last public hearing item is zoning ordinance amendment number 165-2015. This is an ordinance to amend, to amend and reenact Articles 1 and Articles 2 of Chapter 13 of the Zoning Ordinance of the City of Hampton, Virginia, entitled Board of Zoning Appeals by amending Sections 13-1 through 13-17 pertaining to the composition, powers, and duties of the Board of Zoning Appeals and variances, special exception, and appeals of the zoning administrator. Approval of this amendment would bring the zoning ordinance into conformance with changes to the Virginia Code adopted by the General Assembly in 2015 related to the standards and procedures for granting variances and appeals of decisions of the zoning administrator. The amendment would also make general housekeeping and organizational changes to the chapter. Copies of documents and information concerning this proposal may be obtained from the Community Development Department located in Hampton City Hall at 22 Lincoln Street. And just as an intro, Bonnie's going to give you a overview of this. We kind of gave you a little bit of synopsis that this was coming at the meeting last time. These are mandated changes, for the most part, by the General Assembly, so unfortunately, you don't really have a lot of discretion as to what you do here, but Bonnie's going to give you a quick overview, just as a refresher.
Thank you, Terry. This is a housekeeping amendment necessary to come into compliance with the new state code changes that'll be effective July 1st. There are a number of procedural and substantive changes that we've talked about. I won't go through all of them in detail unless you all have questions about them. But on the procedural changes, the relationship between the BZA and the staff and the applicants has tightened. We have to be sure that we share all the materials of the case with applicants in the same way that we share with the BZA, give equal time to applicants when they're presenting in front of the BZAs, we do the city staff, and we also, the code limits what's called ex parte, one-party discussions between BZA members and the city staff and BZA members and the applicants once their case is filed. On the substantive side, they have, the General Assembly changed the standard of review for variances, and they lowered that standard to make it a little bit easier for the BZA to grant variances. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Otherwise, the other changes to the chapter are to make it flow better and be consistent with the new recodified zoning ordinance and modern kind of organization. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them or give you more detail. Any questions?
Madam Chair, just one, Bonnie, this is just bringing everything into compliance with the new state law. Right.
That's right. State law and then general organizational changes.
Right. Thank you.
All right. Are there any speakers?
There are no speakers who've signed up for this item.
Anybody from the audience want to speak to this? All right, then I think we're ready for motion.
Madam Chair, I recommend approval of zoning ordinance amendment 165-2015.
Need a second? All right, call the roll, please.
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. McLeod?
Aye.
Ms. LaRue?
Aye.
Next item is the Community Development Director's Report. Mr. O'Neil?
Yes, the only item under this is the youth planner presentation, and Michael York is here. While he's coming up, I will mention, this is Michael's officially his last, perhaps, although, as you know, we tend to keep them around longer if, if they're willing. But this is, his term, his second year as a youth planner comes to an end at the end of the school year, and he's going to be a proud graduate here next week. So this may very well be his last presentation, and we're all very proud of him, and certainly he's helped us a lot and grown a lot over the two years here, as all of you have seen from the first presentation to now. So, Michael?
Thank you. Good evening, Planning Commission. My name is Michael York. I'm a youth planner, and today I'll be presenting the June Youth Planner Report. This is an overview of the activities of the Hampton Youth Commission and youth staff participated in over the month of May. As displayed by the blue arrow below, it says outreach on it, and that's just representing how the Hampton Youth Commission and the youth staff were outreach to the community regarding the recruitment for the youth planner program and for the Hampton Youth Commission 2015 to 2016 year. On May 4th, the Hampton Youth Commission began to plan their end-of-the-year activities and their interviews that they'd be having at the beginning of June. That's what, excuse me. The meeting started off with mock interviews. These were a part of our training series on professionalism. This is also to introduce the Hampton Youth Commission to the idea of the recruitment process for the 2015-2016 year. The activity involved the Hampton Commissioners breaking up into groups, and one commissioner would take on the role of a leading company such as Target or Hewlett-Packard, and they would interview their fellow peers based on the interests of their company that they were given. They also planned their HYC interviews. They selected the dates. They described how they would outreach to the community and tell their peers about it so that they would have the opportunity to become candidates for the Hampton Youth Commission in the future. They also came up and drafted the questions and the activities that would be happening during those interviews. They also planned the end-of-the-year celebration that they'd be having, as it is their last official meeting of the year. On May 11th, the Hampton Youth Commission had a training on resumes and cover letters as a part of their training series on professionalism. The meeting started off with Hampton Youth Commissioners picking a company slogan that they felt, that they felt best represented themselves. The trainer also went over with the commission different cover letter strategies, such as how his cover letter should quickly catch the eyes of anyone who's reviewing it, and it should also be meaningful. To help them out with this process, they were given the acronym SUCCESS, which stands for simple, unexpected, credible, concrete, emotional, and story or anecdote. These are all things that should be on their cover letter when they're presenting it. They also described, talked about, discussed, excuse me, resume building, and how resumes should be descriptive. They should be really descriptive of who the candidate is as they're applying for a job. It should also include any past volunteerism or work experience that they may have had, as well as any honors awards that they may have earned over their lifetime. And as previously stated throughout the month of May, the Hampton Youth Commission and youth staff was promoting, the recruitment was promoting the Hampton Youth Commission and the youth planner program as to gather candidates for the interviews so that they can have a future commission and to hire a new youth planner. As stated, this is my last, this is my last Planning Commission presentation. These past two years have been excellent. I've really enjoyed my time here. I've learned a lot. I really appreciate everything, and I'll be leaving in August to go to college. So thank you all for your time. This concludes my presentation. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them now, and if not, then farewell.
Any questions or comments to Michael?
Michael, I just want to thank you for another great report, but, but more so, I really want to wish you the very best in the next chapter in your life after high school. I know you'll do well. It's been my pleasure to work with you, and I commend you for your commitment and your drive.
Thank you very much.
And like I said, I wish you the very best.
Thank you.
Yeah, Michael, I just want to say the same thing, that I really have enjoyed your presentations. You've been a true professional, and that's, that's refreshing from young people. But I also wish you best of luck. And what, by the way, what is, what are you going to study?
I'm going to study politics, philosophy, economics, and law. It's one major, sir.
All right, you're going to be a lawyer?
Maybe go to law school, but it's, it's always an option. I'm keeping my options open, sir.
Great. Well, congratulations and good luck.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, ditto to what my fellow commissioners said. I actually have some questions about the presentation, as, as usual. So, Michael, for the interviews?
Yes.
Where did you all come up with the questions that would represent Target or Hewlett-Packard? Did you all talk with representatives from them, or did you just come up with them based on what you think they would ask?
So the mock interviews were basically, yes, basically what they would think they would ask. They, they were given, they were given a company, and the commissioner that was given that company would then think of, you know, what the company was and ask questions accordingly.
Okay. Who came up with the acronym SUCCESS?
It was a trainer, his name is Charles, he's from Alternatives Incorporated, and they do the trainings for the Hampton Youth Commission.
Okay. And the last question is, when you all met with the teachers to inform them about the, the youth commission?
Yes.
What type of response did you receive from them?
They all, they all seemed to be, at least, at least moderately interested. A lot of them, at least I know, some of my teachers at my school collected the applications and gave them to their students. We had applications and interview sheets, excuse me, applications and interest sheets available at the meetings for them to pick up afterward when we were done. And we also had some flyers from the handout, and we did get some applications.
Okay, great. Well, great job. It's been a pleasure having you here. I'm positive this will not be the last time we see you, in some capacity, you know, whether it's coming back as a commissioner or city council, or, you know, under the tutelage of your mom, I'm sure it'll be something relating to community empowerment. But a great job. You've, you've just been consistent, you know, in how you presented, always professional, great tutelage. So I, you know, as much as I want to commend you, I also commend your, your mom for the excellent work that she's done in helping to groom you. But best wishes, I'm sure you'll do great in college. Where are you going to?
I'm going to the University of Richmond, sir.
Oh, excellent, excellent. It's my wife's alma mater, so great job.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Mr. McLeod.
Michael, I'm very, very happy and very proud to see that you're moving forward. I do have one question before I make my final comment to you. I think one of the things that I asked you when you first came on board was about the outreach effort, which I saw that you referred to, and we've had a problem in the past with not really touching base with youth that we felt we really wanted to touch base. Do you feel that, that you were able to unpack that during your tenure?
Oh, yeah, sir, I do feel like, I do feel like I was able to do that. Actually, some of my friends from school, I was able to recruit to the Hampton Youth Commission during my year. I handed out applications to them. I shared them from my experiences when I was a commissioner, and they seemed to be really interested, and a few of them decided to take up leadership roles within the commission later on, and I was, I was happy to see that the commission has, has grown from that.
I definitely thank you for that, and I guess one of the reasons why I'm so happy, I remember you when you were like four years old, okay? And I said, "That little spoiled brat's not going to make it." But I tell you what, you have made it, and you will continue to make it. And I agree with Commissioner Campbell that your mother's helping you out, but a lot of this is Michael, and, and I am very, very proud of you.
Thank you, sir.
Well, Michael, I haven't known you since you were four, but I've known you for the past couple of years, which for me have just flown by. I can't believe it's time for you already to be leaving. For you, it's probably been a long time and a lot of hard work since you started here, but you've done an outstanding job for us. I think you have a very bright future. I look forward to Facebook posts and knowing what's going on and keeping up with your life as you move forward, and I think a big round of applause is in order here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, thanks so much.
Madam Chair, I was reminded that we do have one, hopefully, quick project report for you of an upcoming item, so I'm going to ask Mike Hayes to come up and share with you some work we've been doing on some proposed changes in zoning down in the Phoebus area. Mike?
Good evening, Chairwoman LaRue, members of the commission. I do know it's going, it's getting late. I will make it fairly brief, but I don't want to just blow it off either. I am excited about the changes we're working on, and that is developing a new commercial district, commercial zoning district for Phoebus. As you know, there's a master plan that's been adopted, it was revisited after the closure of Fort Monroe. This is the cover sheet, and you can see how this captures the character, not only of what's existing in Phoebus, but what most of us expect to be built down there. Here are a few more images of that. Again, this is looking down Mallory Street. On the right, those are depictions of adding some new buildings, and with the existing, on the left, you see the plan view, the brighter colors there being infilled buildings, and you can see there how they're brought up to the street and how they interact and fit within the community. At the top of the list here, and this list being the, the action items that came out of this update, the top of the list there is update the zoning, and so that's what we're attempting to do. And so it sort of leaves the question of why would we need to update the zoning? Well, if you look here at this map, you'll see sort of the, the white circles, and these are the key intersections. Over there on the left, that's the interchange with the interstate, and that's where we first get into Phoebus, so we first see commercial activity. Coming down Mallory Street there, you get to the intersection with Mellon Street, and that's where the heart of Phoebus, that intersection right there. And then if you continue on, excuse me, you continue on Mallory, you're heading towards Buckrow, and you sort of have the end of that main commercial district there at the intersection of Mercury Boulevard. And if we swing back around and come down Mellon Street, you're looking there where the, where we're establishing a park on the waterfront, a city-owned property there, and you head to the bridge going over to Fort Monroe. So this is a very crucial area for the city. But then also looking at these colors, we're looking at the bright red, that's a C2 district, and that has the exact same standards that you would find out on West Mercury Boulevard. Very different type of development, very different expectations of what the community expects to see out there, and the type of development out there. And you see some of those blue colors, well, those are actually manufacturing districts that still exist in Phoebus. As you know, it's an older area, and so at one point, there were actually manufacturing, manufacturing development out there.
development out there, but that no longer really exists. And so what we really want to do is focus on closing a gap, and I call it the C2 gap because, again, the majority of what's out there is C2, that commercial district. And so we're looking at developing standards for building orientation, again, bringing those buildings up to the street, making sure it fits in there. To steal a phrase from Keith Kennedy, for when we go to sort of infill the gaps in the teeth, you know, you go along Mellon Street or Mallory, and there's sort of gaps there where buildings probably used to exist, that they go in appropriately. And so, instead of having a district that would allow parking in the front and buildings set way back, it's something that would require that the buildings come up to the sidewalk, and it's a really walkable, vibrant community. And then, along with that, looking at things like drive-throughs. Now, we're not looking, I'm going to go ahead and put out there, we're not getting into too many details here, but we're not looking to ban drive-throughs altogether. We're making sure that if any new businesses come in and want to incorporate a drive-through, it's done appropriately, again, so it doesn't cut up that pedestrian feel and that vibrant activity center. And at the same time, we're trying to make it easier to do mixed use, you know, mixed use especially in the sense of having residences above commercial enterprises. And in this case, we are looking at opportunities where there are actually smaller buildings. The way our ordinance is written, and as you know, there's a few years on our ordinance in many instances, so we haven't fully caught up with our expectations. It's actually a little more difficult to do mixed use with a smaller building on a smaller lot, where you only get one or two residences above the commercial. So this would actually make it easier in the Phoebus area, which is an area where it's appropriate, you know, that type of development, not be appropriate in other commercial districts. So that's something that would be different about this district. And then, again, we're also looking at the uses. There are certain uses that may be appropriate, so more out on the periphery, again, out West Mercury Boulevard, I'm going to continue to use that as the example, because, again, commercial district, that's a completely different character than Phoebus, and yet the same zoning district for the most part currently. So, again, we're really looking to develop this as something that fits the character that's expected out there, fits the types of uses that are expected out there, and hopefully encourage that type of investment in the community. And again, with that, we are going to see some different regulations, some things that we don't see come through here all the time, including required build-to lines. So normally, we talk about minimum setbacks, but you'll see coming before you, some says you have to build up to the front property line. We are looking at building in some exceptions if you meet certain standards, but that's going to involve pedestrian amenities. So again, you're still building into that character even if the building sets back. Sign regulations. Some of the sign regulations might actually be a little bit different in this area. One of the obvious things is that you wouldn't have the large monument signs out in front of a building here as you would on a 45 mile-per-hour street, and we were trying to get cars to pull in that are flying by. So that's a little bit different. We're looking at the types of signs that can be on buildings and that sort of thing, as well as, again, the parking standards, bringing that actually more in line with downtown. Again, Phoebus has more in common with downtown in terms of being a walkable area, a place where you may park at a city lot and walk to numerous commercial destinations versus, again, that West Mercury type development where you have the big parking lot out in front, you know, "I'll park here and go to this one business, I have to get in my car and drive down the street and park in front of another one." That's not at all what this area of the city is. In addition to the zoning ordinance changes, we are also looking at changes, and this would affect both downtown and Phoebus, we're looking at changes that make it a little bit easier for, especially restaurants, but businesses to put seating out in front of their building. And so, in many cases, if the building's built right up to the property line, the only place to go is the sidewalk. Now, of course, there'd be standards to make sure you still have ADA compliance, everyone can walk past, but it would be a way to make it permissible to put tables and chairs out so long as there's room, and again, add to that vibrancy within the neighborhood. And I do want to point out that that is a collaboration with Public Works, and they've been working very closely with us on that. And so, with that in mind, I have a meeting on Friday with the Executive Director of the Partnership for New Phoebus, and we're going to talk about setting up stakeholder meetings and community meetings as we move forward. We have a draft that will hopefully be able to release publicly very soon, and these aren't the first stakeholder meetings we've had. I mean, obviously, folks were involved in developing the master plan, but then we also went back out to the community when we were first looking at developing this ordinance, and so we've met with property owners, we've met with business owners about the changes that are coming. And our expectation is that we will have those meetings. Hopefully, there's not the type of feedback that completely blows up the process and we got to start all over. I don't think we've, I think we've written a good ordinance or at least a good base, and it'll only be some minor tweaks, if any. And we'll be back to you in August with that for a vote moving forward, and hopefully the city council in September to have it adopted, and then, again, covering that large area, having a district that really encourages and allows the type of development we all expect in Phoebus.
Any questions?
So again...
I'm sorry, somebody speaking?
Yeah, I was just, I was just going to say, we just wanted to kind of give you a heads up that this was coming. Obviously, we're not asking for any action today. As Mike said, we'll bring this back, but as usual, we try to give you some advance notice of what we're doing, particularly when we're going out to a certain section of the community. So if you're out eating dinner and somebody says, "What's going on?", you have some sense of what we're out there doing and what we're talking about.
I think it sounds fantastic, and it seems like it's gone relatively quickly, that you guys have been working hard on this to get this done. And I think looking at downtown and Phoebus and kind of as two extensions of the same sort of thing, I think is really a good idea. I think that, and I love seeing the little outdoor eateries, which was not necessarily allowed, you know, in the recent past, so good work. Okay, thank you. The next item is a bylaw amendment?
Yeah, I'm going to turn this over to Bonnie. As she explained to you earlier, we are proposing some bylaws changes, the most substantive one of which is how do we treat cancellations when we have bad weather? And as for our protocol, we have to sort of submit this at one meeting, have it read, and then the proposal would be, you would act on it at the next meeting.
Thank you, Terry. This amendment is related to, as Terry mentioned, weather cancellations. Remember, we had some snow this winter, and the question came up about what happens to the, all the zoning ordinance amendments and land use applications we have advertised? Do they just roll forward to the next meeting, or do we have to re-advertise? Looking into that and looking at our current bylaws in the Virginia Code, there is a process set out in the Virginia Code that allows us to cancel meetings in the event of bad weather and automatically roll all those items forward without further advertisement. So this amendment would clarify our language and make it consistent with the code. Your bylaws do require that I read it, so I will do that as quickly as possible. It's Article 4, Meetings of the Commission, minor tweak to the first sentence in subsection A, which is going to read, "Regular meetings of the commission shall be open to the public except as allowed by the Virginia Code as amended." Second paragraph will be struck out in favor of the new language under subsection B, called cancellation or rescheduling of meetings, which will read, "The commission, by resolution adopted at any regular meeting, may fix the day or days to which any meeting shall be continued in the event that weather or other conditions make attendance at the meeting hazardous, as set forth in Section 15.2, 2214 of the Virginia Code. The commission shall cause a copy of such resolution to be inserted in a newspaper having general circulation and locality at least seven days prior to the first meeting held pursuant to the adopted schedule." Subsection 2 says, "If such a resolution is adopted by the commission, upon a finding by the chair or the vice chair, if the chair is unable to act, that weather or other conditions are such that it would be hazardous for members to attend a meeting, the chair or vice chair applicable may cancel a meeting. Such a finding will be communicated to the members of the commission and the press as promptly as possible. In the event of such cancellation, all hearings and other matters previously advertised for the canceled meeting shall be conducted, and a continued meeting, and no further advertisement is required." And then, the only other changes are to change the letters of the subsections, because I added a subsection in, and on subsection D, add the word "special" meetings, not just "special." And we'll be asking you to take action on that at your next meeting on July 9th.
Just one question.
Sure.
I'm assuming this also includes such weather events that occur while we're in session? In other words, I can understand if we know there's bad weather or we cancel a meeting, what happens if we're in session and the weather turns bad? I'm assuming this takes care of canceling that meeting in session?
Yes, that could also, would also apply. If something happened during the meeting, we could also cancel it. All that would be required of us is to adopt a resolution that says what we'll do in the event of a weather cancellation.
Regardless.
Which we'll do, exactly, yes.
Mr. Williams, I thought we were just going to be stuck here until we could leave.
Just wanted to make it clear when I can go home.
I think that's now.
All right, thank you. I guess we don't need to do anything more with that at this meeting, just listen to it, okay? Are there any items by the public? Is there any public left? Any matters by the commission?
Madam Chair, just want to make a reminder that we will not be meeting the first Thursday of July, we will be meeting the second Thursday of July.
All right.
Due to the holiday.
Thank you for that reminder, and I'm sure we'll get an email reminder, too, to make sure that we don't...
We'll probably send a few of them out.
Forget about it, excellent. All right, if there's no other business, then the June 2015 meeting, the Hampton Planning Commission is here adjourned.